Lord, help us this year. We pray for safety. We pray for your wisdom and guidance towards. We pray for you to do that, the students, teachers, staff, the parent board. And we would work together further in education. But we're counting on you. Well, we're going to need you to help lead and guide and direct us on that. So we ask for your help.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda now is the adoption of the agenda. And before we have any action upon that, we need to pull item 8.01, number 17, and for discussion and question. And then also, we need to pull item 12.01. We have several questions on the personnel recommendations. Is there anything else?
You pulling the whole?
Twelve, yes, 12.01. And then pull 8.01, number 17.
That's not true.
Just asking us to pull 01, we're pulling.
I'm sorry.
Are we asking 12.01?
Yes, it's on consent, but we need to pull it. We have some questions. One of our board members needs some questions and things. All right.
And so we're also, to be clear, pulling the school resource deputy contract?
Just, you asked to pull 12.01. Is there any particular ones on that?
Which one?
The 18.01, number 17 that you wanted pulled.
Yeah, I was, I just had a question in regards to contract, yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
I, Ms. Carlton, makes a motion that we adopt the agenda. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried.
So I have the sheriff's department here tonight that was going to speak to us. So should I let Mr. Tompkins know that he does not need to stay at this point?
Yes.
No, no, I think we're just pulling it off the consent agenda.
Take action.
The board is still going to take action, is what I understood the intent was. Is that correct?
Right.
Y'all don't get to leave yet.
Yeah, we spoke to Mr. Tompkins about the opportunity to speak during that time. Okay. All right, the approval of minutes, July 21st, regular school board meeting and public hearing.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. The July 26th, regular school board meeting, public hearing and executive session.
Motion.
Ms. Mathis makes that motion.
Second.
Ms. Carlton seconds it. Okay. And we have presentations and reports now and.
Vote on that one. You need to vote on that last one.
Motion second.
Okay, we got a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Then we got presentations and reports, school grades and data presentations. Ms. Beshears.
Okay, so we have asked all of our schools to come in and present their school grade data and their plans moving forward for this year. So we're going to start with Steen Hatchie School. Mr. Bray. And I'm going to pass these down to you all so that you'll have a copy. So you can take one and pass it down.
All right, well, I'd like to say thank you to Superintendent Beshears and Chairman Lundey and the board for allowing me to come and speak about Steen Hatchie School. So I just wanted to start off with a little snapshot of our little crew down there. We've been growing and it looks like that's going to continue this year. So we're bumping up against class size limits and a lot of our grades right now. So, you know, that's a bit of a concern. So Superintendent Beshears asked that we go back three school grades. And so what's projected on the screen right now is how the school performed in 2018, 19. During that school year, there was 91% achievement in both ELA and mathematics and then 93% learning gains in both of those as well. So overall, school grade of 92. Then moving forward, of course, we didn't have data in the 2019, 2020 school year due to lack of FSA being administered that year. And so the next school year we have is 2020, 2021. In that school year, the overall school grade was an 86. And there was five categories that was used to derive that score. In ELA, there was 75% achievement with 60% learning gains. And in math, there was 94% achievement and 100% learning gains. And then in science, there was also 100% achievement. Then the most recent score, the first two slides was pulled off of the know your schools that DOE puts out. And so they haven't updated the 21, 22 grades yet. So this is something that we developed to demonstrate something similar there. And so there was four reporting categories for our school this year. In ELA achievement, 85% of the students scored three or higher in grades three through five. And there were 86% learning gains in fourth and fifth grade. And then in math achievement, 88% of the students scored three or higher. And then for math learning gains in fourth and fifth grade, it was 86%. So that totaled out to an 86A, which is the same nominal score as we had the prior year. If you notice, the prior year, there was five categories this year due to not having enough in our fifth grade cohort. We're not able to count science. If we would have been able to, it would have made the score an 89A. So what that means is our ELA and math achievement did increase slightly year over year. So this next slide, Ms. Beshears wanted us to present something that showed the change over time. And so what this slide is showing you is a three-year view of 18 and 19, 2021 and 21, 22, which is the data I just went over. And then it just breaks it down by our four categories that were constant through all three of the FSA assessments. ELA achievement, ELA learning gains, math achievement, math learning gains, and then the overall grade. And so as we look back over our 21, 22 data, we have some pluses. One of the pluses was the learning gains and students scoring on or above grade level exceeded our 75% goal that we had established at the beginning of the year in reading, math and science. And of course, focus on third through fifth because that's where our school grade comes from. And then the deltas or areas that we look to improve on is that cohort of kids that were second graders that are now moving up to third grade. That was the lowest performing cohort in our school based on iReady AP3 data with 50% projected score three or higher in ELA and then 56% in math. So we've got a lot of work to do to get that group up on par with the students that were in third through fifth grade last year. So we've set goals for this year. Our goal is for 90% of students to score three or higher on the new FAST assessment, which is the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking. The reason we set it at that is on FSA last year, third through fifth, we're at 87% combined when we looked at proficiency. And so we wanted to raise the bar a little bit. It's going to be a very difficult challenge due to the new standards and all and the new testing system, trying to navigate that. And then the other goal is for 95% of our students and staff to have an attendance rate of 90% or greater. We found that the data shows that when students are out more than, more than 90% of the time, that their performance suffers. And we expect that from our students. We need to expect that from the folks that serve the students as well. So the challenge that we foresee is again navigating those new best standards and then adjusting to the computer-based assessments that will kick off coming up, you know, when we get back in school and will be three times this year. So again, I always put this slide up. I know the folks that have been to other presentations, they're probably tired of looking at it. But I feel like that's what makes a school successful is standards-based instruction. The challenge is we have new standards, but the process should remain the same. We're going to have our standards and benchmarks. We're going to develop targets for students to achieve those benchmarks. We're going to do that through learning activities and success criteria to help them along the way. So at this time, I'd like to see if there's any questions.
How many students do you have?
As of today, it's 123. I think we were at like around 60 a few years back, so it's about doubled.
123 in what grades?
That's pre-K to fifth grade.
So we're not over 100?
At the moment, we're hoping to get it down by the FT count.
Okay.
Mr. Bray.
Yes, ma'am.
The data you said, was this data just reflected on third to fifth grade? Or is it your overall school?
No, that would just be third to fifth grade data, which is what our school grade is derived from. But I did reference the second grade data with the 50% and the 56%. That was based on iReady data, which was, that's given to all students in grades K to five.
Okay. But that's what my question was. I was concerned, what was your K second students in regards to reading and ELO?
Right, so the lowest performing cohort is that group of second graders that were at 50% score and projected to score three or higher in ELA and 56% projected score three or higher in math.
And that was based off of last year?
Yes, that was based off of the May iReady data that we collected.
Okay, so now you stated on here that you guys already have a plan in regards to how y'all going to work in regards to those students. And your goals for this year?
Right, so it all starts with getting good progress monitoring data whenever they get back in school. And then from there, we develop through our MTSS program. We develop plans for each individual student to help them get up to a three or higher.
So are, will you be doing anything like with your students? Like for instance, students that was below third, yeah, I mean, level three? For those students that were low there, level three?
Yes, ma'am.
Will it be like throughout the day? Or would be a certain time, like in the morning or the afternoon? If you'll be like pulling those kids more attentive?
Right, so the way that we do it is in the morning during their typical ELA time, we have a push-in through like a parapro that'll come in and offer extra assistance. And then in the afternoons, we'll do a pull-out where they'll go to our MTSS teacher. And she has small groups for about 30 minutes at a time that comes through. We have different interventions that we use for them. One of the new things that we're using this, this year is Horizon's phonics. We received some training during pre-planning for that. And our teachers are really excited about the prospects of that and assisting students in their decoding skills.
Okay, now you said for the pre-third grade of 50%. And you say your student count is 123. Do you have a direct number? Is it just 50%?
That's 50% of our third grade students. There were 16 students in that cohort. So eight of them would project a three and higher and eight of them would project at a one or a two.
And you still pretty much working with your students with the board?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Right.
That's the plan. Any other questions?
You're, you're, this year, you'll be under new testing type of curriculum, right?
Right, so now we've got the best standards that are going to be used in K to five in both ELA and math. And so those are going to be what's assessed during those three progress monitoring, starting, you know, whenever we return to school with the first one. All right, so again, we'd like to invite folks to stop by. You never know. Ms. Donald, you called and said, hey, I'm on my way one day. And then we were happy to see you there and show you around the school. But everyone's invited to stop by. We'd love to have you down there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we're down to the items of interest by the public.
Wait, 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 we have some more.
Oh, we do?
So now the primary school is going to come up?
The other side of the room.
Okay, you got everybody here.
Everybody gets a turn.
That's fine.
I'm going to use these too because sometimes they, the font, they can't read. Thank you.
Do I have to talk on that? I'm really loud. Okay, so here we go, 2022, 23, we have a lot of growth to do. We know that. We are ready for the challenge. So we'll start with the kindergarten readiness rate. We know that for the last, I put 19 in there for the last couple of years. So kindergarten readiness rate comes from the Flickers test given at the beginning of the year. We test all kindergartners to determine if they're ready for school or not. And you get a district grade. And then you all, each one of those students ties back to the preschool they went to. So then the preschool program at our school actually gets a grade as well. So for 18, Taylor County was at 48% and the primary school students were at 44%. And the state was at 53%. In 2019, we were at, Taylor County was at 48%. The primary school was at 47% and the state was at 53%. 2020 was fun. We were at 44% for the county, 46% for the primary school and 57% for the state. And then last year, which is our glowing year, we went from, the district went from to 52% readiness rate, the primary school at 53% readiness rate and the state at 50%. So if you look at the bottom, the state, it ranks the counties as well. We were 59th in the state and then 54 in the state, 62. And last year, we were ranked number, the primary school was ranked number 28 in the state. Or the district was ranked number 28 in the state. So that is important for us and for our county because those kids that we are preparing for school are coming to kindergarten. So we want to make sure they're as ready as possible when they get there. Last three years of data, our data looks a little different because we do not have state testing. We use our iReady data and put it against third grade cut scores for FSA. So our data for ELA and for math comes from iReady. And they take our iReady scale scores and can put them against iReady FSA cut scores. So what you're looking at, which is kind of hard to look at, the top is 2019, 20 is your ELA and math data. The top three lines is kindergarten, first and second grade. And then the bottom in math, in reading. And then the bottom three lines would be math for kindergarten, first and second grade. 2019, 20 is the year we left, so which is why you only have half your data. The bottom graph is 2021, basically averaging out to, the three-quarter circle on there is, would be your end of the year data. So it's not fabulous. And then your 2021 data, which is last year, your 21, 22 data, which is last year's data, kind of stood still in time and we need to make some changes. We have worked, we've worked really closely with the elementary school this summer. We've worked really closely with our staffs. We've had really long, hard conversations. Something that was important to Ms. Gray and I was to make sure our staff understood the, the meaning behind the grade and the pressure behind the grade and understanding that, you know, the elementary school was a D, but it's not the elementary school. This is what they're given when we send them over there. So that's something we've worked on really hard this week for everybody to see and all, all summer. So as we look through the data, we had some focus areas that we really wanted to see. We have some really good data from some very specific areas in each grade level. Something we picked out in those grade levels was, we kept saying, those, those teachers have good relationships. And we kept digging and digging and those teachers, it's not just that they have really good relationships. It's that they have really good relationships and set really high expectations. So that's where we've kind of taken our year so far. We've set really high expectations for ourselves, for our leadership team, for our teachers and for our students and from the custodians, lunchroom, aides, teachers, whatever. Everybody is being held accountable for academic growth and achievement. So our success plan for our core academics, preschool uses creative curriculum. Wonders, this is our second year into wonders. I feel like we'll have a better control, better understanding, deeper knowledge of the new reading program. Me and Naked Static. Big Ideas is our new math. I didn't touch it. I didn't touch it. Big Ideas is our new math curriculum. We have worked really hard to dig in and work through our challenges there. Inspire, we're still using Inspire for science and Pearson Meyerwell for social studies. Something we worked on the end of the year last year was a deep dive into the math standards. We did it at the beginning of the year last year for the reading standards with the new standards to make sure that teachers knew the standards, broke down the standards, knew the expectation of where their grade level was supposed to be, the grade level below them and the grade level above them. So they could help make sure they targeted each one of those students. First thing we focused on this summer is our professional development plan. We knew we haven't, we know we have a big challenge ahead of us. We know we have to show growth. We know we have to send the elementary school students prepared. So we started with looking at our staff and what we were doing there. Something our teachers continued to ask for was collaborative planning. We are self-contained classrooms, so our teachers teach all subjects in one room. We did that a couple of years ago to help with transition times and cut down on losing so much instruction time. They really like it, however, it's made it difficult to plan together. Ms. Gray has worked really hard to make that happen this summer. So we have, we have collaborative planning. So our teachers will be able to meet together. They have the same planning every day, but they meet together with the instructional coach weekly to use data to plan instruction and drive for tier one because that's an area that we need to work on. They will meet with the instructional coach once a week, but then they will also meet with a leadership team once a month to make sure we're in areas. And then grade levels will, grade level leads will plan their math and/or reading subject area. MTSS planning meetings. We have them weekly. Our MTSS coordinator, guidance and instructional coach. Keep going. An instructional coach will meet weekly with the MTSS coordinator. And we will meet as a full team monthly, if not in and out the whole time, to really track those students closely and watch them to make sure we're not missing anybody and dropping them in the cracks. Something we focused on again this summer, with our superintendent and then with our leadership team, faculty and staff, is restorative circles. That goes back to us identifying that those teachers that have those really good relationships and there's really good expectations know their kids. So we've worked on the last week and a half of helping our team build those relationships together, set those expectations with them and then setting that expectation for teachers. That, that's going to be part of our normal is working on restorative circles and learning each other and making sure we're holding people accountable. YLC's for this year teaches like a pirate, positive way to get teachers engaged. Book, we just had a special development on Friday with the elementary school. Then we're doing in October, power struggles to our students. And when they start getting colder, we need to work on power struggles with them. Not to, not to try to ease that around and which will help with the restorative circles. And then building relationships and setting expectations is something else we're going to focus on. Academic intervention. This is something we began to summer when we said, hey, we got to do something. Last year, we put in uninterrupted reading. Parents fancy yours, parents can't come in, staff can't come in. Day two classroom and interrupted pirate structural environment. So we are data-driven, fluid MTSS intervention. In the classroom, we have tier two. We use integrity for that. That is. As we look through data in our view, we have interrupted. Morning MTSS intervention. Added in that. Morning reading block, we've added to pull tier three. That hearing go real time. We can get not only tier two and tier three, but pull those level four and five kids to really push them to the next level. Uninterrupted reading, we have staff that pushes into the classrooms. And we did that last year as well. Yes, it's an area of weakness last year. We're pulling staff and having to use other resources. Teachers this year, they're not pulling staff in our rooms. We're going to really have to focus on closing the gap. So we have to have those supports in place. So our staff push-in supports, we've created intervention kits to really structure what they're doing in the classroom to hit those areas of weakness. And then we also will have after-school tutoring again this year. Day two, hopefully. In our data, it also shows that we do a pretty good job of hitting our level ones and twos. However, we kind of teach to the middle. We teach to the threes. So that's something we focus on. We need to add enrichment. We need to really push our level three, three, four and five kids. AR is something that we focused on last year and to really grasp and push for this year. So putting AR rewards in place. We got a book vending machine. We have rewards for reading and taking the quizzes and passing the tests. Not just passing the test, but either at 80% or they took a certain number. We have reader of the month to promote reading. That was something that was really successful that we'll continue doing. We're implementing iReady growth rewards to really push students beyond what they, they can do. And then we will have enrichment clubs again, which that was a huge success last year, which was STEM and music and art and design. And back to we are Taylor County Primary School. We have, we are educating students from six weeks to second grade. Preschool is at 204, kindergarten is at 207, first grade at 219, second grade at 223, the grand total of 853 and counting. As we were running out, we're still registering students at 520. We are busting at the seams. We're excited to see where we're going. We know we have a lot of growth. We know we have a lot of growth to do. We do, I do hold our school accountable for the foundation because we are where they begin. We got a lot to do. We got a lot of hard work, but I think we have good plan in place. Staff is on board and excited to move forward. And I think we're ready.
Do you and Mr. Bray ever have interaction as far as the way y'all do things differently or the same? And do you use the same kind of curriculum?
So we actually, last year, set up that we met K five monthly with Mr. Bray to kind of pick his brain and get his ideas and kind of see how it works for us and if we can implement what he does or if he wants something we do. So yes, we actually all, both schools and all three schools meet monthly.
And on our curriculum, do we compare it to what other schools are using? I've noticed that you were saying this is a newer curriculum.
So because last year was adoption year for reading, which was wonders. And yes, several other counties use wonders as well. And then same with Big Ideas, which is our new math curriculum.
And they're having success with it?
Yes.
Well, after-school tutoring, Kelly, what grades are y'all doing that with?
We do transitional kindergarten through second grade.
And how are y'all screening those students?
So that, we take our bubble kids. So our-
What that mean by bubble?
Percentile ranking. So you're, not your bottom quartile, but like your 25 to 40% kids in the middle there because the tier three kids get interventions five days a week in the, in school.
So what's the tier three kid? I don't know.
Tier three is below the 11% on iReady for us.
Okay, okay. So now we're sure, with the, you mentioned something. Y'all was focusing on one group and you were saying that y'all was going to try to change that. So in going in there, making those changes. I know typically when we get our school grades, and I know for us, yeah, this is something we have to do because, you know, the community is looking at us when it comes to school grades. And just based off the information that's been shared between me and Mr. Bray, I know we do family engagement nights, but what are we doing in regards to like, is there any suggestion that you and your team are looking at? It's how y'all can kind of bring the parent more in on them understanding this is where your child is. This is where we would like to go. And like, what are y'all doing to try to like focus on putting the parent by more?
So our iReady, I mean, our K-12 Lift data, we have student conference forums for every single student. And we have given them to teachers and they are to have those data chats with their students. Some of them, depending on what grade and if they were with us, have data from the last two or three years, depending on if they were with us or not. But it's a series of questions to learn about the student, to learn where they're at, to share the data with the students. So they are to have data chats prior to our open house on the 23rd. And then those are going to be out to, for their students to have data chats with their parents at open house that night. And then the teachers are, because we have some that can't come because of other obligations. But then the teachers are going to schedule conferences with every parent prior to midterms to make sure that they have, they have said where their student is, identified any area of weakness or strength to really push them. This is something we focused on as well. I told you, I told you, we really, we do pretty good pushing our ones and twos, our threes, fours and fives is something we addressed. It's easy to look at a parent and say, this is where your child is as a level one and this is what I'm going to do. It's really hard. It's easy to look at a level four parent, say, this is where your kid is. They're doing great, but at the end of the year, you got to be able to say, I moved them. And it is hard. It's doable, but you've got to work hard to do it. And so to hold teachers accountable, that's something that we've kind of identified as a expectation for us, for our teachers, is that you have to meet with every parent and set a goal. It doesn't have to be a huge goal, but you have to set a goal to move forward with every child.
Have y'all thought about doing anything on a nine-week basis? Like meeting with-
Well, we have five parent engagement meetings this year, so it's, they're about nine weeks.
Well, I know typically when y'all do parent engagements, that's really not where a teacher can focus on a particular student. So that's why I was wondering, have y'all thought about doing like, you said y'all-
Parent conference nights. So yes, parent conference nights is something that we have talked about. But also we took one of our offices up front and turned it into a parent conference room because teachers do have a longer wheel time to add that collaborative planning. And it's something that we have talked with teachers. You know, this is, this is that time to use. This is that planning time to meet with parents and come in when they can during the school day, most importantly. But then to set expectations that you need to meet with all of them, to share that data with them, to help us all grow.
How many students would you anticipate being in your after-school tutoring?
We try to stay, I mean, it really depends on if I, my, my dream would be able to have at least three teachers per grade level and we usually have 12 to 15 in there. We shoot for less, like 10 because of class size and trying to really get academic growth out of the tutoring groups. But I would, many teachers, the grants will let me have.
How are you doing on, I mean, are you, are you fully staffed now, ready for school?
I am fully staffed with 12 new teachers. That actually all, except for maybe one, have education backgrounds. But she, the one that doesn't, you wouldn't know it, so.
So you said the three teachers in yours, more than 10 in each class? Is that what you're saying for the after-school, after-school program?
Yes, three teachers per grade.
And 10, 10 students in each, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I know the weather's getting bad, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bray and Ms. Brandon if they want to go ahead and give a hate for y'all. I say, we're going to dismiss them if y'all don't have any more questions.
Before Jimmy Lee's, I just wanted to say one thing. I looked it up because I knew it was going to be pretty high. But so there are 2,219 elementary schools in the state of Florida. And Steen Hatchie School ranks number 98 out of the 2,219. It's one of the, what does that make it? The top 10% of all elementary schools? And it's number one in free and reduced lunches. So I just think he deserves a big high five for everything he's done.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so first, we wanted to share our mission statement. And the reason why we wanted to share this is because this summer before we even got a school grade, we started having a lot of leadership meetings, really talking about the school's mindset and the changes we wanted to see in our students and our, and our faculty and staff. So we revamped our mission statement. And so I'm not going to read it to y'all because y'all can all read. But it really embodies things that are very important to us. And we included the social development because, you know, kids need to be well-rounded to be successful in school. And when they're missing pieces and they're staying in trouble, then they're not there and they have to be in their seats to learn. So that is something very important to us. So this embodies our goals. We've really had a mindset change. So we'll move on to our, our vision, which we also revamped to include, you know, increased academic growth, knowledge proficiency, while assuming the responsibility for academic and social endeavors. We want to produce a well-rounded child and send them to the middle school. So eventually they'll be a good member of our community. We want to make good citizens of our community. We know we have a lot of work to do, so we are ready to tackle that. So this is a three-year look at our state data, our FSA data. 18, 19, and then there was a gap, you know, the COVID year. So the 18, 19 year was when we were B, so those are pretty decent scores. And so really want to focus on looking at 21, 22. Even though we were a D this year, in most of the categories, we improved from the previous year. So in ELA achievement, we stayed the same. But we made gains in ELA from a, from a 37 to a 40. And then for the lowest quartile kids, we went from 31 to 37%. With math achievement, we increased the point. With math learning gains, we went from 33 to 44, which that was a pretty decent jump. And then with math, lowest quartile learning gains, we went from 37 to 41. So science was where we dropped significantly. And I'll discuss that more, but we went from 37 to 33 and that hurt us. Had we stayed the same, we would have, we would have been a C again. A C is unacceptable. I mean, that is not producing a good kid. I mean, it's not. That means that 30%, 33% of our kids achieved what they needed to on the science portion of the test. It's just not good enough. I mean, we want good kids. We don't want to scrape by the bare minimum. We want kids to be successful, all of our kids to be successful. So we'll look at the next page. This is just the, I'm going to have to get so I can see it. It's hard to read. A breakdown of the 21, 22 years. So if you look at the exclamation point, that is where they were last year. And then the blue line is where they were this year. So again, just reiterating, you know, in math achievement, they were in this range, improved a little bit. The learning gains at ELA improved pretty significantly. And then the math learning gains was a big jump. So we are headed in the right direction with the exception of science, but we have a plan for that, so.
Courtney, you said the exclamation was what it was.
Last year.
And the blue is what it was this year.
This year, yes, ma'am.
Definitely science was your downfall.
Huge, yes, ma'am. So we have a plan for that. So we're going to spend a little, little bit of time here. I didn't put a ton up here, but I have a lot of notes. So one of our things this year, Ms. Popple came up with, we want to give our bulldog best. So that's going to be a term that we use with our students when we are in our classrooms, looking at our teachers. Like we want them to give us their bulldog best. We expect our students to give their bulldog best. So that's something with our mindset change, we are going to have those conversations with kids and, you know, just set that standard of, are you giving your best, you know, 100% of the time? Every minute counts from the minute they walk into the door. Some ways we're going to work on, you know, improving our school grade is this year, we have set aside a time for school-wide reading intervention. We picked that, we got that from Ms. Brandon and Ms. Gray. We hadn't done that. I don't know that it's ever been done since I've been there, but we definitely see the benefit in it. So the first 35 minutes of school uninterrupted, no phone calls. You know, we're not going to be wandering around the school. There'll be no activities. The students will be in intervention and they will be divided by their strengths or weaknesses. We've also saw in our data that we're not, we're not being as successful as we could with our fours and fives. So we are also going to, you know, make sure they get intervention, but it will look a little different to, to help them move, you know, higher up. Our PBS team has developed star expectations, school-wide expectations. They've been working all summer to really develop some standards for our kids. You know, after, I hate to say the C word, we were just kind of floundering and not sure if we'd have school. So they have really got back to the basics and set some standards for, you know, what it's, what things are supposed to look like in the classroom, rules and, and, and goals for, for the kids. And they're posted everywhere. We've met with our faculty about them. So we're all together going to share that with our kids and hopefully they will rise to the occasion. So something we're doing a little different this year to help, try to help improve our science scores is we are dedicating 70 minutes every day to fifth grade science. We also put in place a three-man team for fifth grade. Fifth grade is where they're tested in science. They're not tested in third and fourth. So in the past, we've had two-man teams and the math teacher would do math and science. We realized that there needs to be some specific dedicated time to science. We picked our two best science teachers to work with our fifth grade students and we made three-man teams. So we have a math, ELA and science teacher, three-man teams in fifth grade. We do feel like that will help with making sure that they meet those standards and they, and they learn the standards and what it's expected of them. We've also dedicated some grant funds that we were receiving to having a science lead teacher who is going to kind of lead the charge for all the grades. We think from looking at the data that, excuse me, it would be beneficial, somebody guiding third, fourth and fifth grade science, you know, curriculum and standards so that they are prepared when it comes to fifth grade because they're not tested in fourth and third. Sometimes it can get brushed over to the side, just a little bit, but we're going to make sure that that doesn't happen. And we, you know, we made sure we picked a really good science teacher to, to help us with that. So, and I talked a little bit about mindset change. The whole faculty's on board. I mean, you know, it'd be really easy to get discouraged because we're the, we're the D, but they're not. They are ready to rise to the challenge. They're excited. I mean, I just, it's a really good vibe at our school. Everybody's ready to work and put in the work and they're ready to, to help our students be successful. We also this year, because we realized that the social emotional side of our students might be lacking in some areas, we dedicated time in our, one of our wheel classes every week or once a week, every week, for social and emotional education. We're going to be doing some restorative circles in there and in classrooms, but also just some education for them, you know, to help them be better citizens of our community. So we are receiving quite a bit of grant money because we are that ugly word. So we're going to be able to do some visits to some other schools to see, you know, the things that they're doing good. We've been in, me and Rachel and I have been in contact with K-12 Lift and they are going to hook us up with some schools that were very successful in science that have similar demographics to us. So we're going to visit with them, collaborate with them, you know, get any kind of information we can, you know, to, to better us. We have, like Ms. Brandon said, we have worked a ton with the primary school. And, and he's gone. Mr. Right, we, you know, all of us together can make improvements. Wish, nobody should be on the island working by themselves. So we're all working together because we're, we're all educating the same children. So that is important to all of us and, and we've really dedicated some time to having those conversations and spending some time together. Let's see. Want to make sure I cover most of everything. We have some attendance awards. I mean, that's definitely an issue. I get to come see Ms. Ball occasionally to do some truancy type things. We want to help those kids be more in attendance. Ms. Popple came up with a great idea last year for doing the suckers for school. So every morning we draw numbers and if the kid is attached to that number, then they get a sucker. And it's, we actually had the first truancy meeting we did after that. We had a couple of kids in truancy that had gotten the suckers and they were super excited. And then after that meeting, I don't know if it was because of that, but then they were no longer considered truant and had straightened up a little bit. So let's see. So what we need from y'all is community support, mentors, tutors, volunteers, encouragement, love and prayers. Our teachers and our students are working hard. We have a big, huge gap to fill, but, you know, they are all dedicated to our kids, just like all these schools are. And we want people in our, we want people to come. We want y'all to come. If you have 30 minutes, we will have you teaching an intervention. We have, we have boxes made up too. We're ready to go. So anytime you can give to us, we will appreciate it. And just come see what all the great things our faculty and staff are doing. I mean, it's, it's difficult. The, the kids have some, some learning deficiencies, but we are working hard to close those gaps and, and we're headed in the right direction and we are looking forward to being successful. So, any questions?
How many students do you have, Courtney?
Close to six hundred. I don't know the number as of today.
Um, Courtney, before I ask my question, I, I do want you to, um, share what your school did last year in regards to how you guys was going to, well, yeah, this past school time. Um, because we was at conference and a school board member from another county came up to me and asked, what do we do in regards to our third grade? Because they did see an increase, they district did, but our district seen an increase with scores.
Mm-hmm.
And so I told her, I say, well, I, I really don't know, but I'll go back and ask, you know, I, um, instructional director. And when I went to Ms. Hafcott, she said, well, I didn't do anything. Courtney and Rachel in their school came up with how they, you know, plan to address that issue. So if you don't mind, I would like for you to share.
Okay.
Like what that was, because again, it was what you guys did last year.
Mm-hmm.
And we did see gains from it.
Mm-hmm.
So if you don't mind sharing to the board.
Um, I mean, I think a big portion of it is the intervention piece. Um, we definitely see research that says that kids that are in smaller groups are, um, able to learn better. We have, we take our, 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 our eye-ready data after every diagnostic. Um, and the teachers break down, you know, what, um, where the kids are deficient. So like, if it's in phonics, um, the teachers pull in those kids who are deficient in that area um, and work with them in a very small group. And then also we have, um, interventions, Ms. Dudley and Ms. Crowder, um, pull, pull certain kids. Um, last year, it was, um, a three-two schedule.
I was doing it like first thing in the morning or something, right? Like when y'all doing something.
We do intervention throughout the day. What is it? Oh yeah, and I hadn't, I didn't talk about that too. We, um, our collaborative planning was a big thing that we changed last year. Um, I actually had that written down, but I didn't see it on my paper. Um, we, uh, gave the teachers, Ms. Papel, again, she's the mastermind of master schedules. Um, my brain doesn't work like that, but she, her and Ms. Hall are really good at that. And they dedicated an hour every day for, um, teachers to be able to collaborate. Um, on Wednesdays, and I do think that was a, that was a huge thing. Um, on Wednesdays, they met together. You know, all the third grade, ELA teachers got together, all the third grade math. And we attended and our coaches attended, um, and helped give direction. But, um, that time that they got to spend together and really plan out the lessons and they break down the standard and then they pull resources to best teach the standard. So I really do, that dedicated time is huge and then with the interventions.
Have y'all really been able to get the progress monitoring in your parents' hands?
Yes, um, so we, they do the, they do the student conference forms and then all the teachers are required to meet with every parent by the first nine weeks. And then kids that are, you know, really struggling, we do more meetings with them. Um, we just wanna make sure that they know where their kid is and that they're seeing growth. And, and we also share with them, you know, how they can help us help their child. Um, so that's, that's a, a huge piece too.
How are you on staffing?
Sir?
How are you on your staffing?
We're good, yes, yes. We only hired, only hired a couple of teachers. Um, we have a great team. I'm super excited about all, all our teachers that we have, so it's, um, it's looking good. Last year, we were not in that boat. We were similar to what Kelly faced. We had people retire and, and move and, I mean, that's a huge obstacle and kudos to them for finding teachers. Um, it, it's a difficult task, so we, we got a little lucky this year. So I just wanna.
Go ahead, Jan.
So on your list, what we need from you, the, um, the very last one, encouragement, love, and prayers. I know you, you can do this, you and Rachel, and then y'all have this. But there, there is a part of my mind that's not even worried because I know y'all can. And I've been in your shoes. I've been the sack chairman of a school that was a D school. I've been a sack chairman of a school that was an F school. So I know that feeling in your gut because you know you're so much better. And just, it's just a little micro turns that, that hold you back. And I know you'll get those straightened out. I really will and I will pray constantly for y'all, but the upside to all that is, is, is the teamwork that it takes to build and to overcome is something that you can hold on to for a very long time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, you said y'all, y'all was gonna look at some other schools. And I, I know a neighboring school and I, I don't know, this is just a suggestion. But I know something I seen that I liked that they was doing was, um, and I don't know if it was a school thing or if it just was this one teacher, but she met with parents every nine weeks.
Mm-hmm.
She made sure, she called and she scheduled, she was sitting at little, I forgot, but it's like where the parents can schedule a conference.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that look.
A little app or something? One of our teachers does that.
But.
It's pretty cool.
Sign up wizard or something like that.
Yeah.
But it, it lets the parent set the time. The meeting was no more than like twenty to thirty minutes. So it wasn't like, it was a hour. But it was where every nine weeks she was sitting down and that parent was again taking back ownership.
Yeah. That's huge.
Their student and how that student. I did like, when I say when the lady walked towards, look, that's the, the third grade steward. But she just was like, let me tell you. And so I came back on her ass and I was like, I don't know, but I wanna know what you did. So, but Ms., Ms. Shannon basically said, if you guys, um, if you get, we get to do mine. And it was what you guys can, I guess, I probably should have.
Thank you. I do think it's the collaborative and the intervention.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Lightning stroke, wait, your schools, how is the school?
I told you it was rough.
It's all good. We will make it happen.
The weather's bad and I hate it all leaving, but hopefully not coming home.
All right, so this is, we are T-CMS. So where's we have our mission statement this year? It is equipped to equip and inspire students to think, create, perform, and advocate. We want our students to be ready. We want them to advocate for themselves. I can say honestly, I had several kids this year that felt comfortable to come in my office and say, I feel this way about something. Can we do this? And I really appreciated that they felt like they could. So that's, that's been a big thing for me because I want students to be able to, you know, they wrote me notes. They've come in and just said, this is how I think about something, or can we do this? And we try, so. Um, so I do appreciate that with our students. We really want them to be able to do that. So our mission statement this year is, um, our mission is to provide a positive, safe, healthy, nurturing, and respectful environment in which all students can learn and have the opportunity to become productive members of society. That's a given. It's our whole point of even being there at school. So the next thing is looking at our numbers. So you can see, this is a three years, obviously taken out the COVID year. Um, twenty nineteen, obviously, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we don't have the results. So looking at twenty eighteen, you can see where we were. Um, we had a C that year. And then when you go over to twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, that was the year we had brick and mortar and the tech students. So you can see that we, um, we did drop in proficiency there. And then this year, all the students were back, which was a very, very challenging year for, I think, everybody across the whole country. Um, but with every student back, you can see we did drop in a few places, but we actually did pretty well in others. Um, obviously you see where ELA took a big hit. We did have four brand-new ELA teachers out of eight. So that's a, that's a big thing when you have a new curriculum and brand-new teachers. So we took a big hit there, but you can see how our scores, um, ended up there. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about the specifics of those. So continuing, continuing where we are with that, you see our ELA learning gains and our lowest quartile at thirty-nine percent and twenty-six percent. Um, this past year, math learning gains and the lowest quartile fifty-three and fifty-four percent. Our acceleration points were only sixty percent. Um, the digi-, I mean, the CTE, the, um, lags a year. So we will get this past year's for that class this year, which was a hundred percent passing rate. So that should increase quite a bit for that. And then algebra also is counted in that too. So that is earning forty-eight percent of the total possible points. Um, so T-CMS, we were a strong C. So a fifty-four is a B. So we were, what's that, six points, seven points away from a B? So that was pretty good considering.
Green's about to go off.
You did your job.
Um. Teamwork.
Teamwork. So as I said, I expect that to increase this year with, um, and I'm excited about seeing what's gonna happen next year with our algebra and our CTE there. Um, so what the numbers tell us, ELA has been on a decline for the past three years. So going forward now, our plan is to have the tier-two students, as a term of the reading plan that Ms. Hartsfield, our instructional coach, gets together, will receive supports in the classroom and with additional course included in their schedule. That's our peer, peer counseling course where they do additional, um, reading stuff. They do, um, a vocabulary acquisition, the comprehension, informational text, independent reading novels, and that class. Most every student pretty much has that class. Um, then also, we have our tier-three students that receive more of an intensive reading. We have two intensive reading teachers that are reading endorsed certified teachers that specifically see those students all day long throughout the day for intensive reading. And they use system forty-four and reading one eighty, or it's the same, kind of the same program. Um, then you see our math scores. We've took, had a decline in our math scores the past two years. Um, this year, we do have a new curriculum at GEMS. So we are also bringing back a remedial math course, like a triple I in a sense, with those students that will need remedial math. Um, then we also, science unfortunately has taken a hit for us too. We've had some new science teachers throughout, so that's, you know, it's kind of a struggle. Eighth grade is where our kids take the science test. Um, so the science team is gonna be meeting monthly. Um, we've created all of our, throughout the whole school, our subject areas for each wing. Because, you know, we're set on two great, two wings per grade. They are gonna be able to collaborate together now across the whole school. So my expectation is, I've told them, um, weekly, you know, at least, at least three times a week, you need to be meeting with your count, your partner and collaborating together so you're doing the same things. So, um, moving on, now for the bright side. So our positives, algebra has consistently been strong. We know that, we hear that constantly, but it did take a hit our following COVID. So if you, if you looked back at the thing, ooh, that's my one, sorry. Um, you can look back and see where it was eighty-two percent. So we dropped to seventy percent the year after we come back from twenty twenty-one. And then we jumped up to eighty-three percent, which is awesome. So it did, um, have a comeback stronger than ever. And we are two percentage points higher than the state average for algebra, which was awesome. The state average was eighty-three, we were eighty-one percent. So, um, that's backwards. Yeah.
We got it.
That, we were eighty-three, the state average was eighty-one. That's what it was. I said it backwards. Um, so going forward, we're continuing professional development this year. We'll focus on implementing the best standards in this new curriculum for math. We do have a few new math teachers too, so, um, they're luckily are getting all the training with the, um, rest of our seasoned math teachers. Also a positive is our civics. Um, they followed suit with algebra. They had a dip that year in twenty twenty-one. Um, but they made a rebound. Our civic scores were one percentage point above state average, seventy percent, and the state average was sixty-nine. And we do have one of our civics teachers here, so it was awesome. Um, so with that, the gradual implementation of the new standards during the school year with the full implementation next year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, also to add to that, MTS will meet weekly. Melanie comes over, meets weekly and monthly with Ms. Witten. They work hand-in-hand with that. And then our instructional coach, every Monday, will meet with a specific, um, subject area every Monday after school so that she can go over, tell him about best standards and all that stuff with it, with each. And our motto this year is going to be high expectations, no excuses. And we are having shirts made for us, but they're not ready yet. So that is Mr. Ely come up, he just threw that out there one day at a meet and we were like, let's go with it. That was it. So we are T-CMS. We are committee of, com- community of seven hundred and thirty-two, working together to achieve our mission, vision, and mission. And we welcome you to visit anytime and see the great things happening at T-CMS. Short and sweet.
You guys did have some awesome algebra scores.
Yes.
When I, I seen that when I was.
Yeah, we do have.
BOB website, and I was like, that's good.
They are impressive. We do have about six hundred and seventy students now. We are at capacity just about, it's a lot, so.
So you said that you, um, one thing was you had, um, a lot of, I think you said new E, um, science teachers?
We have, this year, ma- no, I have two new math teachers.
No, you said last year.
Oh, last year, we had new, for ELA, new ELA teachers.
Okay.
And then I had one that left and we had a new one in eighth grade, which is our tested subject.
So when you guys are pairing, pairing the teachers with like mentors.
Mm-hmm.
Like, is that something you guys try to make sure that, that something like a new teacher would be able to have in a mentor is someone that, you know, might be, I know it might be hard to do same subject area far as a mentor.
Right.
But maybe that, you know, that might be a way you guys can look at it, address.
And we do try to do the, if they do same subject, our, our subject is obviously, that's gonna be the best thing. But you want the stronger teacher to that, because just because you are always just great, don't mean you're always a good teacher as far as helping another adult do it all too. And the planning part of it. I mean, that's a big thing, coming up on the planning, but, you know, do the best we can do on that one, but. And then we have Mr. Ely meets with teacher, the new teachers a lot. I go in and meet with them. Ms. Witten's very, you know, accessible to, on top of their mentor teacher.
And staffing?
I have, still need two. I mean, we're gonna be okay in the classroom, but I still could use two.
Okay. And I, and I, and I picked up on a couple of statements so far. Are we looking at a numbers of students beyond what we were projecting?
According to what?
It.
You're looking over yourself. Uh, the numbers right now are looking higher than what we projected, but you have to wait and see how.
Show up.
Holding in other schools.
Me, I guess it's, I mean, it's a good thing.
They're busting at the same in all the schools.
Okay.
And Ms. Bashir's talk, and I talked today about trying to come up with a solution for that too, so.
Okay.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Taylor County High School, you are up.
Problem.
Any color print?
Thank you. I mean, I can go without. I'm good. Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, okay, so. I'll wait.
I'll print extra for like peeping audience or something. It's a lot of y'all.
Did you print extra? I just did ten because it was.
I, I mean, I don't know his people, I don't know if they wanna read them, but it's extra.
Um, so. This was, as Governor DeSantis shared many times, the last year of FSA testing, which was a very, um, controversial statement, I think, that was made because it made a lot of people, including my teachers, um, some of my staff feel like we weren't gonna test at all anymore. And those of us that have been around for a while know that we've done FCAT and it went away. And that was the big banner. And then we moved to FSA and now it's going away, but we're always gonna test. So on our last year of FSA testing, um, I've got our chart here. What I'm most proud of, our big celebrations, math proficiency and math learning gains are way up. When you flip a couple of pages here in a moment, uh, two years ago, pre-COVID, we were the lowest in the state in math. Um, and as a former math teacher, that just absolutely is not acceptable to me. So we really challenged our math teachers, our math departments, because our proficiency for math comes from eighth grade to algebra. And then if students take algebra to geometry. Our progressions are not set up for most students to do that, so it really does just fall on that algebra. So we really, really zeroed in on the standards that were tested the most. And we said. And we said, my challenge to the math department was, the kids that we get in algebra are not like the middle school has in algebra. We have the kids that have never passed the test. So the challenge there is, how do we push them to raise their scores and not continue to beat them up with math like they've been beaten up in the past? So I told algebra teachers, pick five things, the high stakes, the high things that you know, because we, we have the breakdowns and they tell you the percentages of what is tested. And they really zeroed in because I said, look, if they can do those five things well, problem one is one of those five things. And they go, oh, well, I got this. Well, they go to two and three, and they may or may not know the material, but they're still a little bit on a high, right? And so they go through the test, and it really, to me, it's become this, we're not going to get them there and proficient right away, but if we can keep them working towards it and keep that scale score going up, then we're going to be more likely to get them that score at the end. Okay? So math proficiency is a big celebration for us. Geometry was at forty-one percent, because mine doesn't break out that way. It's the, the average of the two. I think the state was at forty-five percent, so that's, that's not slacking at all. Biology was at fifty-nine percent proficiency. The state is sixty-one percent. So again, we're within striking distance. And US history was at fifty-six percent proficiency, and the state average there was sixty-five percent. The other big celebration that we have, ELA, while they're kind of, they were languishing a little bit because we did get the new curriculum last year, and they did choose their curriculum. So we were kind of in that bridge year. We do have fewer level ones headed into tenth grade than we have in the past. And so what we did last year was we implemented Read One Eighty. It's a small group intervention. They do it at the middle school. They do systems forty-four. We waited. The book sat in my office for months because we didn't have a teacher. I couldn't find the right teacher. I've said it a lot. We're going to wait and find the right person and not the right now person. Our right person graduated in December as an education major, and she picked it up in January, and now I think I've got about forty level two, level, I'm sorry, excuse me. I've got a fewer number, I've got fewer level one students in tenth grade than we've had. And we've got about forty-five bubble kids, those medium, high level twos, that we've strategically placed in classes with really, really strong ELA teachers to try to get them over that hump so they can get their tenth grade ELA score for graduation. So that's our challenge right now. So where we landed? Got to multitask. We were at four seventy-five out of a total thousand points. Our graduation and acceleration, I need to flip back to that for just a second, those lag for us as well. So acceleration for us is one point per graduate. So if they are in my graduation numerator, I get a point for each of those kids for the lifetime that they're at the high school. So they can do everything under the sun, but I'm still only allowed to count them one time. And that, that's a little bit different. So our challenge is with this year's, last year's graduating class, so this was the class of twenty twenty-one. Class of twenty twenty-two, their acceleration is around the same percentage because they didn't get the same opportunities because of that tech, you know, that blended year and all the chaos that they had. So we'll, we're going to make those points up in other places. So if we flip ahead, we can look at where we've been, and like I said, for me, as that former ma, former math teacher, those twenties in the math proficiency and the math learning gains, those hurt my feelings a lot. And I think it hurt my math department's feelings, and so they really rose to that challenge. So now we're doing that same, making that same challenge to our ELA department. What are those things that they are not doing and not doing it well? And if you're not doing it well now, there's no way you're going to test it well when we do our progress monitoring and our big large-scale testing in May, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So the last two years, we were at four nineteen, which was a C, so that was right on the, on the bubble. Last year, a very, very low C. Prior to COVID, we were at four ninety-two, so we're not back where we were. But we're definitely trending in the right direction. I'm really, really proud. Like I said, those biology scores right there at the state average, US history right at the state average. I'm super proud that geometry beat the state because that's a big, you know, anytime you can, or not beat, but they're right there with it. Anytime you're right there with them, it's not. And I told my staff last week, I presented the same thing to them, and said, what, what we need to see is this. Are we there? Not yet. Are we within a few points of being that B? If we all work together, a hundred percent. There's no doubt in my mind, we can do this, but we've got to dig in, and that's the next part of the journey. So what's next? We know we have new tests for ELA and math. So for us, it really doesn't change the month of May that much because we still will have all of those EOCs, algebra, geometry, biology, and US history. So I submitted my testing calendar, and it doesn't, the month of May doesn't look that different. What looks different is the progress monitoring that we'll do before that. So we will do two progress monitoring sessions. How am I going to say this? We're going to do the state progress monitoring in the fall and in the winter. We're going to do district progress monitoring that we've chosen, which is Exact Path, which will help our teachers give those tier two and tier three interventions as needed. Tier one is what everybody gets, and so what we're really focusing on at our school is our tier one instruction and making sure that we're intentional with that. If eighty percent of our kids aren't getting it, if you look down your, you know, the column in the gradebook and eight, you're, you're way below sixty, eighty percent of your kids didn't get it, that's something you've got to go back and reteach. We don't have time to, to say, oh, well, twenty is good enough. That's not okay. We got to go back and do it again because something is missing. Either the delivery was missing, the base skills are missing or whatever, so we're going to go back and fill those in. So we have new tests for ELA and math. We have new standards for ELA and math, new curriculum, and that new focus on that tier one instruction. So again, intentional instruction. And, and my belief is this, and I've said this since FCAT, when a hundred years ago, it feels like if we're intentional with what we're doing, if we stand and deliver and we work hard to make sure that our kids have that tier one instruction at that eighty percent, our school grade is going to work itself out. We know we won't get a school grade next year because everything's a baseline, but what I told my staff again today, because we had that, that final, you know, meeting, any more questions, what do we need to talk about? It may be a baseline, but for my tenth grade kids that are in ELA, they can still earn their score for graduation. So we can't take our foot off the gas. Our kids are in algebra, can still earn their score for graduation. So we can't take our foot off the gas. So we have to keep doing what we've been doing, but ramp it up even more. They're going to tie this year's, as I understand it, they're going to take the scores from progress monitoring at the end and tie them back to scale scores so that, so that my kids will get those scores that they can use. We'll see. So strengthening our tier one instruction, what everyone receives means meeting our students where they are and taking them where they need to be. We're going to be committed to our vision and our mission. We're going to keep climbing. We're going to ask for help. We're going to work on our student relationships, have compassion for our students and ourselves. I told my staff, don't go home mad. There's plenty of us there. Our doors are always open. If something frustrated you, if it was a kid, a parent, one of us, come talk it out with us, because there's, there's not enough, we don't have enough emotional energy to put into it if we go home frustrated every day. We need to be committed. I'm a hundred and ten percent in. Dave's a hundred and ten percent in, and I'm not asking anybody to do anything that I won't do. If you need me to come in and teach math, but not geometry, I can come do that. I can do those small group pullouts. Any of us, we've all offered to do that because we each have strengths that we can share with our teachers and our, and our students. So we're here to help and work through any small things before they become bigger things. And so this just goes back through those same core values that we have. We are committed to our students and our community and to one another. We don't have all the answers, but together we can figure it out. Again, we're going to meet our students where they are. We're not going to drag them to where they need to be. We know that they come from different backgrounds and have different passions, and our responsibility is to find those, their strengths and help them get to that next level. We're prepared to take our steps necessary. We've had a very positive pre-planning time, even when I presented our goal, our big three-year goal to everyone. And our goal is this, within three years, one hundred percent of our kids will be graduation-ready at Christmas of their senior year. That means the ninth graders that just came today and met us and saw us and, you know, visited with us for a little while, by December of twenty twenty-five, have to do the math because we did this earlier, they're ready to go. And that changes so many conversations, right? We're not scrambling at the end for test scores. We know that we can start talking to them about, do you want to do BBTC in January? Because then they can, if they don't have those remedial classes. It just opens everything up. So a hundred percent in three years, and we're not going to accept ninety because that's not good enough, because I don't get to choose the ten percent that get left behind. We're going to proactively plan for all possible scenarios, those that we expect and those that we have to accept. And we refuse to lose because we care about our students and our staff, and we know that challenges reinforce our desire to be better and make us steadfast as we work toward our goals. So at the end, and this is, you know, we have family meetings. We don't have staff meetings because we are a family. We're dedicated to helping our students reach their full potential. And, and, you know, one graduate at a time. That's where we are. We are helping our, build our community because we're the agents of change. We know that we influence outcomes of our students with our example, our direction, our leadership, and our compassion. And then we know that we're the launchpad because we're where they're going next. So if they go to Big Bend, if they go to North Florida, wherever they go next, they're going to come through Taylor County High School. So when Dave and I took over, we started saying we were moving mountains. It was move that mountain. That was our, our phrase. And I've stood before y'all before and said, you know, it hasn't been that long ago that my kids came through Taylor County High School, and they got a fantastic education that prepared them to go to a four-year university, both of them, and they were successful, and they're off the payroll, and they have mortgages and car payments. So that's kind of that, that bar, right? There's no reason why we can't be back there. So we're still moving mountains because it takes pieces, and we know that we're in control of our future because we're going to work together to make it happen. We would love for y'all to come visit. You don't get as many hugs at the high school, but they'll come have nice conversations with you about cars. And what did I say? I talked to them about, I can talk just enough lift kits, tires, and exhaust with a certain group of guys that they just think I'm really, really cool. So any questions?
How many students do you have now?
Six fifty-two. And taking more every day. My ninth grade classes are sitting at thirty. Tenth grade is about the same way. You know, and we're going to graduate all of them. That's the plan. So we've got a lot of work to do.
And staffing?
I have one position that I believe I've filled. He was supposed to come visit with me, and then he and his son got COVID, so they can't travel. But if that comes to pass, I will be a hundred percent, so I'm excited about that.
Heather, you said that you guys are, you somewhat said about your testing schedule. You said that you was doing fall and something with progress monitoring, but then your school yourself is still going to do progress monitoring. So, I mean, do we as a district have information yet in regards to progress monitoring, far as testing?
You know, you're going to have to use this if you want to talk to me.
Do we have our date yet? I know when I asked Ms. Halfcock, she said that DOJ hadn't released the schedule.
Testing?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. The windows. Pam's giving all the principals the windows.
Okay.
They gave us the window right around when we came back from PACE. Those were published. And so for us, our challenge is, because we still have to do ELA retakes in the fall, we'll still do PSAT with ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. Like, I've got a lot of, I don't want to say bullets to dodge, but I've got a lot of moving targets. And so when they, when they gave us the windows, I started working on how we're going to do it and not interrupt or interfere with those other tests that we know that we have to give.
Now, in the course exam, how many do y'all have?
Biology, US history, geometry, and algebra, so four.
And they, they do those every semester, right?
They do them in the spring, when they complete the course. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
One thing I didn't hear you touch on, and some of the others didn't touch on, is your attendance up? Is it down? How's your attendance doing?
We, our attendance was up at the end of the year because we did submit names to DMV to pull driver's licenses, and that fixed a lot of it very quickly. And, and the really unfortunate thing about that was, one young man came in, and he was in and out, and in and out, and in and out. Well, when he got his license pulled and he had to come for that consecutive period of time, he made a level five on his US history EOC. And so when he came and bought his parking pass the other day, I said, while you're here, because I was sitting at the table, I said, have you talked, have you seen Ms. Courtney? He said, no, ma'am, I haven't. I said, I need you to go find her because she, she needs to talk to you about that test. And he said, what did I do? I said, ma'am, just go talk to her. Go, shoe. But it shows that he had the ability, and he was one of, he just, that's exactly right. So. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jason, why don't they let me go first? I always relish the opportunity to talk about Big Ben, so I'm thankful to be here this evening and share some information with you. This year, we embrace the we are just like everyone else, and so we are BBTC. And I'll wait, wait for that to get to the end. So our mission statement is to provide quality education and technical training that will empower each student to reach his or her potential, and our motto is educate, empower, employ, and we certainly embrace that in every single thing that we do. We are a high-skill, high-wage, training, post-secondary institution where most students can complete a program in a year or less. And in fact, all of our programs can be completed in that time span. What happens is we have multiple programs that students end up taking. We split our long programs several years ago, and so we now have Milrite One and Two, ENI One and Two, Diesel Technician and Diesel Systems, and Welding and Welding Advanced, and all of those are less than a year. So students can leave at the end of a program, or they can come back and take the advanced level, if you will, or the second level. Some choose to do that, some go to work. We also have an adult ed program, nice little poster titled up there on our adult ed poster. And we, we truly embrace that the tassel is worth the hassle. We worked, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Lewis worked very hard to get thirty-one graduates last year. We already have a graduate for this year. Ms. Johnson's already produced her first graduate. We offer free tuition for our adult ed program from a generous donation from the Elks Club, so anyone who comes in that wants to take classes can at no cost. And we can pay for tests if students don't have the opportunity or the funds to pay for that. We also work very closely with Career Source North Florida because they have underage youth, which is twenty-four under, that they can serve. Students that have good attendance and make progress and are interested in a CTE program, we have a, what's called a JEDI program, which is GED-integrated. And we can start them in their CTE path before they graduate with their GED. The challenge there is they cannot get a Pell Grant if they don't have a diploma. And so rather than hold them back, we have got some scholarship money. And so rather than hold them back, we have got some scholarship money from a Rural Development Scholarship and we also have an IET with the Department of Education. So we can enroll students in GED and CTE at the same time. It's not, it's not called a dual enrollment program, but it really is dual-enrolling them. And we've had success with that. This is our data. We have a little bit different data. We have to dance to the tune of the Council on Occupational Education, who is our accrediting agency. And in order to meet accreditation, we must graduate 60% of the students who start our programs. And of that 60%, 70% must be placed in the field that they studied. So they can't be in nursing and go be a welder or be in welding and go be a nurse. And then in our licensure programs, we have to meet 70% of the passage rate for licensure. In addition, we have Board of Nursing requirements that our nursing students must meet. So they have a higher standard than, than COE does. They have to score within 5% of whatever the state average is in nursing. So you can see all of our programs met that except one. And it's easy to explain how that happened. There were only at this particular time when the data falls, four students in E and I Two. And with the market the way it is and, and industry so desperate to take these students and give them a job, they offered two of them jobs starting at $70,000. And I couldn't convince them to stay in school versus that $70,000 salary. And so they left and understandably so. That put us at 50%. It was easy to explain to our creditor. It is a target for us, but we have three years to turn that around. And I don't think we'll have an issue with that going forward. It just so happened that the market is what it is. You can see our campus totals, our completion rate is 79%. And you might go, gee, 79%. I'd like to share with you that the state of Florida college completion rate is 26.9%. So our students are staying and completing and doing an exceptional job. We also don't put up with anything. If you misbehave or you don't attend, you know, you have to come to school. 85% of the time it's even higher for nursing or you get removed. And so for us to graduate 79% across the board and some of them even at 100%, that's a very admirable rate and we're proud of that. Even more proud of the fact is that 94% of those students have gone to work in field. And so we are really filling the gap in our community and within our region with our students getting high-skill, high-wage careers. And our licensure rate is exceptional as well. We have a 91% passage rate in our licensures with medical, I'm sorry, with massage therapy and patient care at 100%. Our nurses were at 85% last year. They're at 86% this year. We already know what our passage rate is. And that's first time test-taking. So the Board of Nursing records first time. COE will take whatever time they pass it. So that might even be higher for us for COE. And they are coming to accredit us next October and we are welcoming them because we're very proud of, of our accomplishments. Speaking of that, I already shared with you that we had 31 graduates last year. We had 163 graduates in our CTE program. It's our highest ever. I attribute that to the fact that we had some rapid credential programs, those quick lobotomy and those quick nursing assistant programs. But still, we, we had a great graduation rate. We had 248 industry certifications or licensures earned. That's 150 the previous year. So we did a great job there. That will articulate to about $225,000 in CATE bonus money, which goes directly into our programs. And, and to our, to our teachers as well who work very hard. And that number doesn't include all of our nurses. So it'll actually be around 255. We have a contractor, I think, selected. I'm not really sure where we are in that process for our virtual reality lab. I, I hope to be breaking ground soon because we're really excited about that opportunity. We wrote, we relocated and duplicated our E and I program. So we're actually offering two sessions. There are 40 students in that program, which we usually sit around 18. And now we doubled that to 40. And now we did that with a $225,000 dual enrollment grant. And because our practical nursing program is one of the top in the state, we were awarded $400,000 by the legislature for our students' achievements. And our goal there is to establish a night program with that grant fund. And our nurses are already working on what that's going to look like. They'll do clinicals on the weekends. They'll do night shifts at the hospital and that type of program. But it's what the community's been asking for. So we're happy to be able to offer that through that. I will tell you, I, I've never met a grant I didn't like. We've applied for a million-dollar apprenticeship grant. I don't have high hopes in getting that grant, to be honest with you. It was a learning process, but if we get it, we wrote it for a lineman program. And so if we get it, then we'll, we'll see what happens. And we've written another $850,000 grant for an upgrade and modernization of our equipment in our CTE labs. And I do feel confident we'll get a chunk of that. We may not get all of it because there's only 15 million across the state. But we'll definitely get some of that. And with that, in turn, we'll modernize our equipment in our shops. So we're excited about that. We had three students compete over the summer at the National Skills USA Contest. And Edwin Cologne placed 15 in the adult category. And Davy Woods placed 27th. That's out of 50 competitors in both of those contests. We learned a lot. We'd never been to Nationals before. We've competed virtually, but we'd never been there. So it was a learning curve and we, we'll, we'll be back and we'll be prepared. Alora Baxley, who is one of our PN students, but she competed as a PC student in First Aid CPR, placed seventh in the nation. And then just a couple of weeks ago at FACTI, Edwin was selected as FACTI, which is the Florida Association for Career and Technical Education's Post-Secondary Student of the Year. So he's a top career and technical student in, in college in the state of Florida. That's a lot to be proud of for his instructors as well as Edwin. Great career start at BBTC. That's a great career start here. I will tell you, we opened today with 215 adult students. It's one of our largest opening days that we've ever had. Poor Ms. Johnson has 35 adult GED students. Again, biggest GED class we've started with on day one. And because the high school students didn't start or won't start until tomorrow, that doesn't have them included in there. So there's a, from Taylor. We're dual-enrolling from Dixie, Lafayette, Madison and Hamilton. And then tomorrow morning we'll bring in, or tomorrow afternoon we'll bring in Taylor. So our count will be even higher. I, I will tell you that we are at capacity. We do have those, those 12 programs that we're offering and tonight we'll ask you to open another program. And we've got some plans to move that forward with a lot of the community support. So hopefully we'll have that and be able to start a CDL program.
So are all of your programs basically full out there now?
Pretty much. There's a few openings and a couple, but for the most part, we're, we're full.
Good.
When will you hear about the 1 million linemen?
I don't know. You never know.
And you're talking about like the linemen that work?
Yes, power linemen. It'd be an apprenticeship program that will feed Duke Energy, Tri-County, Tallahassee Municipality, Gainesville. But, you know, I mean, you never know.
If we get that, would that be like dual enrollment or just adult ed?
It will depend on what the companies want. If they tell us that we could start a student in high school, then we will. And most of them will let us do that. They, they, they can't go to the job until they're 18. But there's no reason why they couldn't start the, the program in a high school, senior year. So we'll see. You know, I mean, this was the first time we ever did a grant like that. It's a learning process. If we don't get it, we'll write it again next year and we'll get it then. We'll, we'll work it out. We did not get one of the grants that Career Source North Florida wrote for us, but we didn't write that. So I'm not claiming that we didn't get that because I didn't do that. Any questions about us?
You could sell a program, I'll tell you that.
Oh, you know, I try. Lord knows I try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for my assistant director. I greatly appreciate that.
And Jody, when's your big fundraiser dinner under the pond?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Can we say something before they leave?
Sure.
I'm about to say they keep scrolling out, but I don't want them to stay the whole time if they don't have to.
Y'all just listen at the end because I'm going to wait for mine to the end because a bunch of people have already left.
Let's just wait.
Y'all just have to watch.
I want to ask Casey a question.
But it ain't fair for you to comment and me not comment and them not comment. And if we all comment, we'll be here all night.
All right, we need to move on. Okay. We're down to the items of interest by the public.
Run while you can.
No, y'all.
No, no, no. Listen. Watch the video. No, I'm not asking you to stay. Say, I love you, but.
You've got, you've got school tomorrow.
Well, you've got something coming up.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us down to the items of interest by the public. Do we have anyone this evening that needs to address the board at this time? If so, this would be your moment, anyone. If not, we'll move on. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us down to 7.01, an action item. Ms. Tillman, Director of BBTC, is requesting to open a new commercial driving license class. This will be a 360-hour career certificate program at BBTC in the fall of 2022.
Motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. Any discussion?
Ms., I do miss Tillman. Is this adult ed or is this dual enrollment?
It can be a dual enrollment, but they have to be 18. It will not be offered during the school day because we have to use the parking lot as a driving course. So it will be a four to nine-thirty program, but they can dual-enroll if they choose to. And because we have open-door scholarship, anyone who takes this program will have free tuition at, at least for the first year.
So you're saying they can do dual enrollment?
They can as long as they're 18. They have to have a CDL learner's permit. You have to be 18 to have that.
But they can graduate and then come to you, right? Oh, they can?
They have, if they're 18, they can dual-enroll with this.
No, I'm saying like when they graduate.
A bit of adult ed.
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right.
Yes. They can come straight from night school to the program. We're going to try to offer this three times a year. That's our plan.
That's what I was going to ask.
Oh, so it's not a year-long program?
360 hours.
360 hours. So we can get them into $36 a school a week.
Oh, wow.
And their driving time, we're going to have a meeting in a few weeks with the logging companies and the driving companies. Then you are welcome to come and iron out some detail. Let our students drive their routes. So they can drive with their drivers and company in town that drives to seven every day. It's a 10-hour route. So that student would get their 1,000 miles in one day driving that route. And, you know, the company allow our students to do that. That with contracts and insurance and all that with all of our, our legal issues before we get started.
Okay.
So they have to have, you said they have to have some license before they can come to you?
They have to have a CDL learner's permit.
Okay.
You have to be 18 to get that.
Okay, okay.
You have to be a registered school. You usually could go and get CDL from anybody. But now you have to register with the federal government to offer the application. We're in the process of registering and hoping to approve. We always figured we could pull it back if you didn't, but we were trying to move that forward and get all our ducks in the road to be able to open and express.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, so.
I think this is great for our community.
You have a teacher yet?
No, we advertising it.
That's another position that we really need filled. So, yeah.
Isn't the job description on the agenda tonight?
It is.
Right. Now, do you have a start date for this program?
Everything has to fall in place for us. We have to get a truck. We have to get new drivers to sign on with our routes. We have to clear some things with Miss Hall. We have to clear, we have insurance, not hurdles, but just paperwork. And my, my, my goal is to start, you know, later than October 1st.
Okay.
Can you, can you, do you have to own the truck or can it be somebody that lends you the truck?
We don't have to own the truck. We just need a truck that we can use.
Okay.
All righty, that's on the pot and the pot cooking then. All right.
Definitely.
Item 7.02, this is an action item, the 2223 Taylor County School Board, our Code of Student Conduct and Discipline Matrix.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion. Ms. Carl?
Bonnie Sue.
Okay, I meant Ms., Miss Bonnie, Bonnie Sue Agner made the motion.
We have a concern about, I think there's a concern about that.
Any further discussion?
Wait, excuse me. I think the board would be better served by making this a motion to approve that for public notice and for hearing. Because it is a, quite a sweeping change to your policy. So I talked to Ms. Bashir's about that late today. Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier before we started, but I think the board needs to amend that motion to be approved that for
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
For public hearing, okay.
I do have some questions in regards to some things on there. I don't know if we would need to clean it up before we advertise it based off the discussion.
I will change my motion to, for advertising or public hearing on it.
Ms. Carlton, do you change that? So we've got this motion in a second for advertising, for public hearing. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I seen some things that I, I wanted to bring to your attention. I don't, again, I don't know if this would change the advertisement, but I noticed in here some changes in regards to juriscode. I noticed some changes in regards to offense and all that right there. And so I noticed Ms., I know Ms. Bashir, you said that you guys were trying to change different things in regards to leniency. But I did have some concerns with the, with the preschool. You have on here, I'm trying to find the page. It was some language on there in regards to what could get a student removed. And my question was the language on there in regards to the parents. I was just questioning, my concern was did that need to be under the discipline matrix? Why wouldn't that be in the school handbook? I'm trying to find the page though. There was some language on there about the child fees and all that type of stuff. And that just seemed like more of a handbook issue, not a discipline issue in regards to preschool. Okay, it's on page 43. It was the parent parental action for child removal and it just seemed like some of that's like in regards to the parent, it seemed like that would be a handbook, not a discipline issue. So I was just trying to understand why.
Are you talking about the preschool removal policy?
Yeah, on page 43.
Okay, page 43.
It was on there where you had the parental action for child removal.
You're talking about the financial portion of that failure to complete?
Yeah, it seemed like that stuff, it, it just seemed like that would be better served in the student handbook, not the discipline matrix.
Thank you. We'll make a note of that. Yes, ma'am. No problem.
And then on page 46. Now, I'm just talking about the parental on 43. I'm not talking about the, the other area where you got the child action. Because I mean, it's now I'm just talking about the parental on forty-three. I'm not talking about the, the other area where you got the child action, because I mean, that's discipline. But just that in regards to parents, I'm like, I just, to me, that seemed like that's a handbook issue, not a discipline issue. Um, and on page forty-six, you guys had, um, the Taylor County School District twenty-one, twenty-two K-five technology discipline. Does that need to say twenty-two to twenty-three, or is it okay that it's specifying that specific year? On page forty-six?
Page forty-six, you're talking about at the top?
Yeah, was talking about, it's highlighting the discipline, the technology matrix. That needs to be changed, okay. And then also in here, there was a section that specifically addressed wireless and um, let me find the page again. It was a page that specifically addressed wireless use, but at the, the first bullet in it, it stated what would be the guidelines for the high school in regards to cell phones. But then it read as if like that part of the let me find what page it's on. No, it was on another page. It was where you, hold on.
They're probably saying something to say about using their wireless system.
No, it was talking about cellphone use, and it highlighted how the high school students could have their phones, but then I seen in there where it addressed it just specified the high school students. I was trying to figure out, like, where did the rest of the students fall up under that? Let me find it. Okay, page twenty-three, Kiki. It says wireless communication and under number one, it says the high school students can have their phone. But then it doesn't like specify there anything in regards to K-five or six through eight. But then when you get to the discipline grid on page on page forty-nine, where it says cell phones, but then I think that is falling under grade six through eight. But then Ms. Tillman doesn't have anything under BBT technical, but I understand that you're making some changes in regards to your cell phones usage on your campus. So I was just trying to wonder, like, why did page twenty-three just specify?
Twenty-three is just saying that they can use them. I believe that's just talking about the policy. And then I believe you said page fifty-one. They're talking about, you know, page twenty-three just says they can have them on campus and when they're appropriate. But I believe you're saying page fifty-one, and I'm going to that, so give me just a minute, is where it talks about forty-nine. Forty-nine, okay, where they're talking about like things that happen if they're not using them in the correct way, I believe. Let me look and see real quick.
Cause twenty-three says they can have them.
Right.
But it specifies the high school, but I thought in the middle school. But I thought at the middle school, they can't have them out. They can have phones, but they can't have them out, right? So that's why I'm trying to understand, like, I know at the high school, they can have them.
They can have them any school, like, we're not, we can't.
Number two says they can have them. Number one says, talks about the high school, but number two says all students may possess.
But at the middle school, they can't have them out, right, Kiki?
Well, that says that here, too.
But high school, they can have them out and about, right? So that's why I was trying to understand why did twenty-three, number one, say that, but then number two said that they can have them. That's why I'm trying to understand, like.
Because they're two different things, because number one is saying nine through twelve, our expectations are different. They've allowed those teach, those students a few years ago, um, they allowed them to have them during lunch. They can use them. The other schools don't allow that. So I believe that's why that's specifically different. Number two just.
You need to specify that, cause it's.
It does specify that. Number one says TCHS grades nine through twelve, cell phones, electronics, electronic devices may be used appropriately during all transitions and during lunch. They're at the discretion of the teacher during any given class time, but number two says students, that we're talking about all students, may possess wireless communication or devices at school. The devices cannot be used upon the student's arrival on school campus and can only be used after the final dismissal bell. So that's what they've tried to do there. If you, if you feel that's confusing and we should, number two, we should say, K-eight students, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need to really specify.
Recommendation, we'll, we'll put that recommendation down.
Now, Jody, you were saying something about cell phones.
And in our matrix, but it's in our handbook and it was sent out today, because cell phones are a big problem in business and we teach the world. So the first time a teacher will, you know, tell the student, they'll verbally tell them, you cannot have your phone. It's also part of our, our workforce grade every week. And they'll lose their workforce grade points if they have their phone out for that day. Um, on the second offense, they're gonna send them to your chucker, either speak with them about the importance of not having the phones out, because you'll get fired in the will, you'll get fired at the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the third offense, you're gonna be suspended for a day, and on the fourth offense, we'll withdraw you.
So, but are you collecting phones, or you leave them in the student possession?
We do not touch phones. I'm not, I'm not having.
Okay, no.
We do not touch phones. Now, in many of our classes, they have cell phone pods.
Okay.
Where they allow the student to hang their phone and charge it during class.
Okay.
So that they, they're out and not being confused.
Okay.
But we do not take phones.
Okay, okay. That's, that's the clarity on the phone. And then there was another area where, um, it was what, um, I think it was on page on page twenty-eight, the off-campus felonies. On page twenty-eight, this is new to the matrix about the off-campus felonies. However, we don't have this highlighted in our table of contents, like we have all these other sections. And then I was with this right here in regards to the off-campus felonies. How are we getting this information? How are we becoming aware that a student is having an off-campus issue?
Our SROs can pull those reports for us, and we've asked that they start doing that every week. Um, I think they've done a pretty good job of informing us up to now, I think. Um, we've just asked for, we've just asked for, like, now, I think we're asking for once a week that it just be done at a regular time, so we don't miss any. But that's how we get it.
But do we have any language? Like, do we have?
The Florida statute covers it, yes, ma'am.
Well, when I was reading statute, statute was saying that we had an agreement with DJJ.
It says what?
It was stating that we had an agreement with DJJ, Department of Juvenile Justice, in regards to some reporting of data. The only thing I read, well, we would retrieve information from our SROs when it's campus-related, not off-campus. So my question is, if we're now paying attention to off-campus issues, how are we getting that information so we can make sure?
We're asking them to pull that, um.
I didn't see anything in, in statute language that said we can get information from an off-campus issue. I read, well, we can get information on our own campus.
One thousand, I can pull it real quick. Yes.
Are we doing the same thing for teachers?
One oh oh six point oh nine.
Are we doing the same thing for teachers?
I'm sorry.
If we're pulling it on students.
We get.
Okay. Yeah, gotcha.
No, I just, my question was, where are we getting the information? Cause I mean, I know. Okay, okay. I just wanna know, cause when I read, I seen where it state, we would have an agreement with DJJ. The only thing I read, well, we would have an agreement with law enforcement was in regards to on-campus issue. I didn't read anything in statute that highlighted the reporting of off-campus. So I'm just trying to figure out how are we retrieving that data that we are becoming aware of off-campus issue? Angela, do you know?
We communicate with our local law enforcement. I really don't know what else to say.
DJJ officials share that information. There's a free flow of information with that.
Okay.
Between that agency, between DCF, between a lot of the agencies, there's a, a disclosure back and forth. Um, I can't point you to an agreement. I think by statute, they're authorized to do that, so they, they turn it over.
Okay.
That's not something that we're doing weekly.
Okay.
If we here, so you hear of whatever, and simply, as far as I know, when me and my staff would do this call to the state attorney office. But some stuff is not, you know, privileged information, you know what I mean? So depending on what type of case it is, um, sexual, or something like that, that's all we can tell you. Let me get a sexual. Calling the state attorney. Or then we can, if the student has it. Some situations, the case that you may.
But that's why I was asking, because in what was stated on here, it just stated what was our obligation, but it didn't say how we was getting that data, and I just wanna make sure there's no crossing of agencies. Just because it is.
You have a suggestion?
We have the.
You have a suggestion for us to add something?
Yeah, I, I just would like the language to be added as to how we're retrieving that data.
Have you?
So it would be understood that it's not like somebody just picking up the phone and saying, well, I heard such and such. Making sure we know that we have language that state, this is agreement and it's under statute, not just somebody picking up the phone.
Is that all?
I'll get with Ms. Vile on that and make sure that we have that.
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you for your suggestion.
So we have a motion and a second to advertise, uh, for a public hearing for the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, Student Conduct Discipline Matrix. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carry. We pulled item eight point oh one, number seventeen, uh, which was, uh, Ms. Bashir's, uh, is, we was requesting the approval of the School Resource Deputy Program Agreement uh, between the Taylor County School Board and Taylor County Sheriff's Office for the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school year. So, uh, Mr. Tompkins is here tonight. If, uh, I guess, what, what, the questions do we have concerning this? Um, Ms. Donnell, you asked to have this.
Do you want a motion to approve first?
Was you presenting anything?
I'm sorry.
Was you presenting anything?
No, you said you had a question.
The board tonight was that the sheriff signed the contract. He does not agree with the fact that the BBTC position goes away come January. However, to get the, the contract price down to where the school board or superintendent felt comfortable, we had to eliminate that position after January. That's when our officer retires.
Right, and as I understand statute, um, one oh oh six point one two says a district school board may enter into mutual aid agreements with one or more law enforcement agencies. As provided in chapter twenty-three, a school safety officer's salary may be paid jointly by the district school board and the law enforcement agency as, as mutually agreed to. And you all have not agreed to absorb any of those costs, is that correct?
Yes, we do. We give costs. You don't pay for any fuel. You don't pay for any maintenance. You don't pay for any equipment. You don't pay for any training, and all your money covers.
We do pay for, we do pay for FASRA. We pay for half of FASRA.
And you, you don't contribute to overtime. The, our, our agency picks up all overtime.
But we also pay you for twelve months, and we're only asking you to work a small portion of that.
No, ma'am, you don't ask us to work a small portion of that. You ask us to work almost eleven months of that, or ten and a half months of that. Upper school, we cover all your after-school events. They have to train. They have to go to the conferences. That is all school-related. It has nothing to do with the sheriff. Bodying law enforcement to the community.
My question was with that wish that he pointed out that was outlined about the officer no longer being down there for the whole school year. I just wanted to make sure that we was gonna address
Right.
that there was a plan.
We did.
Right, but this information is public information, so I just wanna make sure it, in the, in the contract, it doesn't say what our plan would be. I wanted to make sure we were addressed tonight, what our plan would be.
Put our resource officer at that time when Steve Bell retires, that we would put our resource, our, um, attendance deputy out there.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure.
And they will be covered. The sheriff also told me we did not have to put anybody out there because we're covered, because they have two guardians. So technically, I was told by Marty and the sheriff that we don't have to put anybody out there because we're covered, because we have guardians out there. However, I don't feel like that would be a good
Yeah, and the contract doesn't specify that, so that's why I was wanting to know.
Because they're not paying for it.
Right, but
But we have a plan.
That's public information, and I just wanted to make sure we address the public with a plan.
Absolutely. Pam, can y'all, will y'all speak up? Will y'all come up and talk, like, cause we cannot hear.
Not under the sheriff's office if something was to happen. Employed by you all.
There's nobody employed by us yet. This is January, as we have to go to, wait till January before any of this.
He is already employed by us. He does.
I know, I know, but what I'm saying is the man is retiring in January. We don't have to worry about replacing him until January, so we're not, we, we're getting.
So I just wanna ask another question. So, we are not paying those deputies full salary? You're adding to their salary and benefits?
Yes, I talk to their benefits. You pay their base salary.
Are you paying any of their salary, Mr. Tompkins, the sheriff's department?
Yes, ma'am, we pay all their overtime.
Are you paying any of their salary? Are you paying any of their salary? Their yearly salary?
School contracts.
Is it a twelve-month salary?
They're dedicated to the school. They take their vacation at the same time. You take your breaks.
Do you use them in other areas, like for the festival, or for December when we're out of school, or for any other time?
Like roll out, too, yes, ma'am.
So you do. Do you pay them extra for those hours they worked during that time?
And they get paid their overtime hours for that day.
Just overtime, not extra hours.
Well, that is extra hours, I mean.
So if they work in the month of July, Ms. Brassby gets overtime for anything that she works in the month of July?
Uh, if she's working for.
She doesn't work, we don't ask you to come in July. So my question is, again, are you paying your deputies to work in July, to work every Christmas break, to work when we're not in school?
Yes, they still get a paycheck.
Is that paycheck? Are you paying them extra? Because you're saying that we're, in that contract, it says, and that what you sent me, it said, we pay for their twelve-month salary benefits. Are you paying Deputy Brassby, if she works in July, let's just say at the boat ramp on a Saturday, not on a Saturday, but on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and she's not there, she's getting overtime? So she's only required to work, all those deputies are only required to work for the days that we're in school. Anything that they work over the days they're in school, they're getting paid extra for, from the sheriff's department. What would you consider a special duty assignment? Okay, patrol.
They work patrol, and it's an overtime shift, yes, they get paid overtime.
What is an overtime shift?
Listen here, I'm not gonna sit here and get nickel and dime by you about this contract. Either you wanna approve the contract, or you don't wanna approve the contract.
Right.
The sheriff gave you.
Actually, I'd like you to answer questions.
It's worked for five years, the way we've had it in place, and now all of a sudden, you want to nickel and dime everything.
Nickel and dime? Okay.
That's exactly right. You're talking about the safety of our children. We provide you highly-trained officers.
And we love them, and we don't, and we want them to stay. But as I explained to you, we have a budget, and so do you, and you we don't, and we don't ask for we don't ask for cars. We don't ask for gas.
So you would like for us to have, not be able to respond to anything on the campus or another campus if something happened by not having?
I think you should. I don't, I don't know. Other districts do not have to have police cars, so.
Okay, well, we're.
Deputy sheriffs, and they, I mean, they work for the sheriff.
Yeah. Well, what we, what we're here for this evening and has, and Superintendent Mashir's had already requested that we accept the contract from the sheriff with the stipulation, you know, that we had full coverage. That starts, school starts tomorrow. We had full coverage all the way through, and then we had one deputy that was retiring in January. And that would be, uh, then that would leave an open, openness out there at the BBTC. But that we would address that prior to that re- retirement. And, uh, so I don't want to, myself personally, don't want to, um, get the notion out there that we're gonna have a little weak, a weak link somewhere in our, in our system. But right now, between now and January, we have full coverage at our schools. And so Superintendent Mashir's had. And so Superintendent Bashir's had, had already put it on the consent, all we had to do was to, to say yes. So it, and, and Ms. Donnell, you just wanted it to be public.
And the sheriff has.
We don't have full coverage to January, we have full coverage throughout the school year, it's just one school. I think you need to specify that, because we got full coverage.
But that will be addressed.
Okay, but specify that one school, don't, we got full coverage.
Yeah.
It's just one school.
And the sheriff has signed it.
And that school's fully covered until the end of January.
Exactly.
Right.
I just wanted us to acknowledge that there was a plan, because this is public information. People might not come to these meetings, but they pour information, and I didn't want there to be any community concern that one school is not gonna be covered. So if it's acknowledged in the contract that there was gonna be a break in service, I wanted us tonight to acknowledge that that is already addressed. That was the only concern for pulling it.
So we've got it pretty well aired out, we have a contract already been signed by the sheriff, and, uh, we, we were on the process of ju- basically approving this contract. Uh, and we are covered, we have a little glitch in January, but, uh, that will be taken care of, uh, before January or during that time.
And Mr. Wundy, we, we did not change our prices, we only, we only decreased by one. The contract price didn't go down, the nickel and dime comment, the contract price did not, excuse me, because we're asking for one less deputy because we, because we, we closed half school, therefore we did not need that extra deputy. Please let it be stated on the record that I appreciate all of our school resource officers very much. I have every desire to work for the sheriff's department, however, I do not have a desire to be taken advantage of.
Okay.
We have to be good financial stewards of our money, and it is a joint effort to provide for the safety of our students, because just as we are funded by the state and the taxpayers, so is the sheriff's department.
But it's everybody's tax, it's everybody's taxpayers' money.
Absolutely.
It's, it's not, um, okay.
It did not go down, and that is an inaccurate statement. Our contract price went from five forty-two to five hundred thousand, lost one deputy.
Okay.
But that was because we still were covering BBTC for the entire year.
Again.
The deputies got a pay raise, we have to cover the pay raise, we have to cover the benefits and the insurance.
And we did cover that.
Right.
Excuse me, and we did cover that, we're, we're losing.
Okay, all right, well, what we're here tonight.
No sir, we're losing a deputy and one of them's retiring in January. Our contract price, we are not nickel and dime in the sheriff's department, we are paying for the deputies that we are asked to be assigned to our schools. Please let the record state that.
Okay.
Show that you pay for their base salary and benefits.
Okay.
Which is their whole salary.
So.
And their retirement and everything else.
So.
Pay for their overtime.
Well, that's not what she sent me on the spreadsheet.
No ma'am, you do not pay any of their overtime.
Oh, I didn't.
She's sitting here tonight, she gets paid overtime.
Marty, I didn't say overtime.
She, she said retire, she said retirement.
No, I said retirement, I misunderstood you.
All right, well, what we have before us as a board is to, uh, approve the, uh, contract with the sheriff's department for our twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion, do we have a sec?
Because there has been such back and forth about the numbers, if the motion could be amended to include that the contract being approved is for the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. That is the contract that has been executed by the sheriff and is before you tonight.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, but Ms. Carlton?
Second.
Uh, who seconded it, okay, Ms. Agner seconded it, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carry. Thank you. This brings us down to item nine point oh four, uh, Ms. Bashir's superintendent is requesting to change the starting time for regular school board meetings to be changed from five forty-five P M. to five fifteen P M.
Motion.
Who, who makes?
Thank y'all.
You make, Ms. Agner makes the motion? Did we have, Ms. Mathis next and seconds it? Any discussion?
There's a conflict for me, um, I wanted to know, could there be interest for five thirty?
Whatever y'all want to do, I was just told that we had a late start time because one of you worked out of town and that was no longer the case.
Yeah.
So whatever you all are comfortable with, I'm fine with.
Okay.
If you can't make five fifteen, then, if, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Five thirty is okay with you, Deidre?
I pray that will work, so, yeah, I am back in town, but I, I, I still have kids and my husband hours fluctuate, so I am my, I have to be able to pick up my kids, so five thirty and plus I think that would give community time to show up to meetings.
Okay, I will change my motion from five fifteen to five thirty.
All right, do we, all right, do we have a second to that?
I got it.
Uh, Ms. Mathis, okay, you agree to that? All right, so see, what's before the board this evening is to change the starting time for our board meetings to five thirty, uh, instead of five forty-five.
Starting when?
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes, please. I will say, Deidre, if it gets to be an issue, let us know, okay?
Well, we got, uh, we got November, so I'll let you know.
All right, five thirty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carry. All right, uh, this brings us down. Item twelve point fifteen, uh, Ms. Tillman is requesting the approval of a new job description for a commercial driving license.
Twelve point oh one.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, I, I wondered why I said full. Twelve point oh one, uh, Ms. Donnell had some questions, discussions on this.
I just noticed, wait a minute, did you want a motion or anything?
Ma'am?
We didn't need a motion or anything, did you?
Well, we will need to approve it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, motion's been made to approve, do we have a second, Ms. Mathis seconds it, okay?
I just noticed there were several names that was, um, uh, down here for instructional appointment, but last week they was on, um, the sub list, so I just want to make sure, can you explain? Okay, all right. So with a statement of eligibility, what does that mean now? Okay, so it won't change no more at this point there technically. Okay. Okay, I, I just noticed like last week, when we, they was on sub, they went from personnel to sub to back personnel, so I just want a clarity. Okay, and that does change them going from sub to contract, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I got a quick question on the supplements that are added here for big, the supplements that are added here to Big Ben Technical College, these three, was that something that we've approved?
The what, state again?
The supplements for Big Ben Technical College, we've approved that before tonight?
Yes, that is, I mean.
He's been, yeah, yeah, he was, he's been, yeah, last several, couple of years or three years or so.
My memory's not that long.
All right, we have a motion in second that we approved the personnel recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, all right, so carry.
These microphones are not on, so I, I pray the recording is catching us.
This, I blame it on lightning, I guess that's what all started this.
Yeah, it's not on.
Okay, twelve point fifteen, uh, Ms. Tillman is, uh, director of BBTC, is requesting the approval of a new job description for the commercial driving license instructor at BBTC.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion, Ms. Carlton seconds it, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item twelve point twenty-six, uh, Superintendent Bashir's is requesting to move Sherri Causey Title One Administrative Assistant from scholar, uh, from salary schedule line A two one one to A one zero one.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. All right, Ms. Mathis seconds it, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, then we're down to the items of interest by superintendent and board, and Ms. Bashir's, do you have anything?
Thank you, well, it's been an exciting night. Thank you for this long meeting, I think that probably next time, um, when we do great presentations, I will know to probably break it up for everybody, because it makes for a very long night. So I apologize for the length of the meeting tonight, I know you all wanted to see the data, but we can do them earlier next year and we can break them up so that it won't be so, such a long night for us. Um, I think everybody's off to a good start, I've visited all the schools this week, um, except for Sting Hachi, I did not ride down there, he asked that I wait and come a little bit later on when they're, you know, in school and I'm gonna do that, um, other than that.
Ready to roll.
I think we're as ready as we can be, looking forward to a great year, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donnell.
Yes, um, I really want to thank all the administrators tonight for their, um, presentations. Um, it takes a lot to get up here and to present, you know, your schools and what you're doing and everything, and by no means I want any administrator to feel like this is all on them. We are a school district and like Courtney said tonight, one person should not have to feel alone. They should feel supported and have what they need. Um, I look forward to the school year, um, again, we got the data, and just like, when you look at the data overall, I think this is one reason why I always ask for data. It's because when you look of it, look at it overall, you don't get a clear picture. But when you get to look at it broke down, you get to see, yeah, we might be here, but then you really get to see where those gains has been and the achievement that has been made. So that's why I always ask for the data, because you don't want to get the wrong picture, you want to get the right picture. And data can tend to do both of those things. So, um, I like what was presented here tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, I, I know our K-five schools are our title schools, right? So I'm just curious, um, what is our Title One support from a district standpoint when it comes to our schools? And then also, um, I'm looking forward to see what is gonna be the state support in regards to our elementary school, but again, what is gonna be our district goals? Because again, we can look at our schools individually, but ultimately we get graded based off a district. And so I think we need to make sure that we keeping in mind, what are we doing from a district standpoint to not just support these students at these particular schools, but as they, um, matriculate throughout the district. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, again, we got new tests, I'm glad we got some information tonight that there is a schedule, because I know Ms. Halfcott mentioned that we hadn't got any information, but now we do. And so it's gonna, you know, be a good year, I'm proclaiming a good year, I'm declaring a good year, because again, tonight, based off the information that was presented here tonight, we had gains throughout, I, entire dis- school district, just from, you know, preschool, K through five, middle school, high school, and even at Big Ben T B C. And again, our students, um, they're important to this community. I know at one point the district was one of the top three employers. So for us to be a top three employer in this community, that means kids graduate and go to work. And so I think that's even more important, why we need to ensure that we're doing what we need to do on our end to make sure that these kids have a career path when they cross the stage. Another thing I want to again encourage tonight, we as a district, because this is what we do, we always look at what we're doing and what we could be doing better. But I would like to challenge you, Superintendent Bashir's, as well as your staff, as to what are you gonna task your parents to do this year? We are a community, we get what, you know, is enrolled to us, but when we get those students, the parent is looking for investment on their return, uh, you know, a return on their investment. But I think we also too gotta make sure that we're doing everything in our power to include our parents back in that seat of you enrolled, this is your student, and parents are the first teachers. I know I always look at myself as that as a parent, I don't just look at what the school's doing, I look at what I'm doing as a parent. So I would like to see what are we doing as a district to challenge our parents as well as what we're doing to challenge our community to ensuring that they're being the first teacher when they bring that student to us. But what I seen tonight, I'm excited for this new school year, and I think we off to a great start with just the information that has been presented here today, and what was, you know, you guys planned this summer when you did your trainings, and just looking at what you guys plan to do in order to, again, you know, high expectation, greater outcome, so that's all I got tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Agner.
Well, I wanted everybody to hear what all I've got to say, I hope they will listen to it. But I'm very proud of the presentation tonight. Um, I think our superintendent has listened to us well and conveyed a lot of the things that we've, we've had concerns about and conveyed it to the administrators, and it showed tonight. Um, we go from the bottom to the top, I loved the commitment that everybody was saying all the way from, it, it was, it was just like, everybody's in unison, and, and if consistency is key to any growth with anybody, uh, in anywhere, if you don't read, you're not gonna grow, you're consistent, you gotta keep it going, you gotta keep the ball rolling, and it gets bigger, and it gets bigger. Um, when I first got on the board, Sting Hachi was about to shut down, Votech was about to shut down, they would cost the district too much money, dah 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 dah, and to see this tonight was like, you know what? That shows you what vision will do, that shows you what determination will do. And this district has been determined and had this vision and it is working. And I see that vision tonight in all of the schools. I love the parent involvement, I love because, I, as a parent, we all know, there's been times where it's like, man, I wish that teacher had told me this before now, because kids are not gonna run home and tell them the bad things. They're not gonna tell them, you know, they're gonna try to hide the bad grades, they're, you know, the papers. And so I'm glad to see that the parents are getting more and more involved. And the welcoming, they're being welcomed, these are the, where everybody's working together. Um, the building of the community, uh, I hear community in every school that came, and the businesses and, you know, any, and ha- and asking for mentors and asking for volunteers and asking for the community come. Um, the, in the past, I don't think that parents felt like they were wanted in the schools. And I think tonight, if they could hear what I always said, they know they're welcome and they know that they will, they will be welcome with open arms. Um, attendance is something that is so important, but I believe that if the parent is involved, they're gonna want their kids to be there, but if they're not involved, they're, it's not gonna, they're not gonna know the importance. So that was, and it seems like everybody is wanting to own the baby. It's their baby from all the way through, and everybody wants to hand off the good baby to the next group. And I, that was just really good, really good. Um, I think that's about all that I wanted to touch on. Um, I encourage the community and anybody that wants to go volunteer, I, it kinda gives me an idea of wanting to go volunteer now. Um, I know during COVID, we couldn't, they didn't want to get it, we didn't want to give anybody anything, so we, I stayed away from a lot of the schools during that time, but I'm, I'm excited to get back to helping in some of the areas. And other than that, I'm just so proud to be a Taylor County Bulldog.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, well, everything Bonnie Sue said, I think that, um, that obviously we have room for growth, but there's a plan for that growth, and I'm a million percent on board, and, and whatever we can do as a board, whatever it takes. And I'm a million percent on board, and, and whatever we can do as a board, whatever it takes, that's what we want them to have. So, um, that, I, I mean, I beli- I believe in the Taylor County Bulldogs, so I ha- I do have great hope for that. I had a question, and I didn't ask it because we were running so through time, but maybe somebody in this room knows the answer to it. The industrial arts class at the Taylor County Middle School, what is the area of study? I'm looking at Kiki, because, technology? Okay. So is it in, certifications in Adobe or Microsoft or? Okay. Okay. All right. And then, um, something that, since our last board meeting to this board meeting, we had our master board training. And something that would really help us a lot as a board is to, I know y'all are developing the strategic plan right now. And to align that strategic plan with our board agenda, to be able to say, we're, we're doing this, or we need this, because it aligns with this portion of our strategic plan. And board docs will do that. It will, you, you can do that within board docs. But that would allow us to see nuts and bolts instead of poofs and clouds. I mean, we could come back to the words on the lines, because our strategic plan is wonderful. The one that we had before was, was great, and I know we're de- developing the new one. But when we're, when we're voting on things, it's hard to trace that all the way back to where it is on paper and pencil. So to align the strategic plan, um, along with our board agenda, that would be very helpful, too. And I, I'd love to see some, um, mid-year projections from our administrators, like a, a briefing on how they feel down the road and what they may need from us, too, at that point. So a mid-year update would be great from the administrators. And, um, Hannah Touchton, it was on, one of our graduates last year. Uh, she was a senior at the high school. I saw her name on our, um, yes. That, so she's coming to work for us. I was excited about that, to have one coming back. And I, hopefully she'll get a lot of inspiration from there and, 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 um, support and decide she wants to further her career in education, so, um, but also website updates. Do we have anybody? Who's?
Ron.
Ron, you're a website update guy? Okay.
You approved extra hours on the last agenda.
I did.
Yes, you did.
I was looking for back to school today. I just, I didn't see back to school yet. Okay, got it. All right.
Well, you got all the numbers of the number students we have. We'll put that on there, get that right.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carlton?
Well, in the morning, the buses will be rolling, and it'll be back to school. So I mean, we, we, before you know it, we'll be graduating, but it's just, it's one of those cycles. But, uh, I know everybody's excited and, uh, it'll be a busy morning tomorrow, a busy day, and I just wish everybody to have a, have a little bit more patience, and we'll get through it. But it's looking forward to having full capacities at all the schools, just listening to it. And I do want to thank, uh, all the administrators for the reports tonight. I think they were very good. And I do appreciate the superintendent getting that into us and kind of in a, you know, timely manner, too, you know, because they haven't been that, out that long. So I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ball, we don't need an executive session, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I can concur with all what the board members have said. Uh, there again, uh, as we start school tomorrow, my hope is that it will all very go, go very well. Everybody will be safe, that we have a great school year, and that, uh, Lord's willing, we back a year from today or whenever, and that we're looking back in this school year, and that we can see what great things it has been accomplished in our schools and in our community. And it can happen with all of us working together, being unified, and moving forward. We can, we can do it, so. But again, I thank everybody for coming this evening. Uh, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Donnell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carlton. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Carrie.